Good evening, everybody. Today is Wednesday, May 28th. The time is 6:30 PM and I am calling this meeting in the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order, and we will now say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Posey, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, trustee DeMar.
Here.
Trustee Lucido.
Here.
Trustee Papa.
Here.
Trustee Oliver.
Here.
Treasurer Gillette.
Here.
Clerk Posey, here. Supervisor Viviano.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. On the next item is approval of the agenda, and I, at this time, I'm going to ask for, in addition to the agenda, under consent, it would be item 7B, which will be to approve the pay of a pay certificate to Orland's Construction, the amount of $28,543.92. And if I can get a motion to that effect, I will explain during discussion.
Chair, move the agenda with the amended, amendment of 7B.
Support. So, Orland's Construction is the company that the board approved the contract for to do the basement renovation. There is one small delay in final, filing out their contract, but it's beyond their control. So, our security contractor had to reconnect some of the wiring before some final inspections could be done. The, our, the Orland's Construction themselves have completed all of their work. There is still a balance after this, that I think their total payment due was in the neighborhood of $39,000. But I am asking that we release this amount to them, and we only hold back the last small amount to ensure that we get our final building permits cleared. So with that, is there any other discussion on the consent agenda? And Stacy is bringing us the pay certification now. Thanks, Stacy. I'll let everybody get a copy of this before I offer a vote.
Mr. Chairman, we're at the stage of approving the agenda, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'm proposing we add this item on as a consent. And we're doing this under consent because this contract has previously been approved. The contract is on budget, and typically, we add these pay certifications into the consent as a way of notifying the board that we're paying out these larger checks. Any other questions or discussion on this? Anybody need a chance to look at it further? So, here are no more discussions. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the agenda as, with the addition. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item three, approval of the bills. Is there a motion to approve? So moved. Support. Any questions or discussion on the bill run? Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Papa, to approve the bills. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to approval of previous meeting's minutes from May 14th and the May 13th budget public hearing.
Trustee Kuzma makes a motion.
Support.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by trustee Kuzma, supported by clerk Posey, to approve the meeting minutes from May 14th and May 13th. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now, we're going to move on to public comment. So, this is our first public comment of the evening. Anybody who has a public comment to make about an agenda item specifically may do so now at the microphone on the right-hand side of the room. I don't see anyone making a move to the microphone, so we're going to move on to the consent agenda.
Does the chair move the consent agenda in its entirety?
Support. Is there any questions or discussion on any of the consent items? Motion, hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the consent agenda. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. All right, this is going to take us to our public hearing. So, the way this is going to work is, I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson or GPW Director to explain why we're here for a public hearing today. I will then open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to make comment regarding our township sidewalk maintenance program may do so at the microphone. There is a three-minute time limit, and when there are no more speakers, I will close the public hearing. So, Mr. Johnson.
All right, good evening, board. So, last year, the township passed an ordinance going over the sidewalk maintenance program that allows us to perform improvements to the sidewalks throughout the township over a seven-year period. Letters were sent to residents about the program. That includes the items that were in need of repair for this year, and this year includes District One on the map, which is the southwest sections of the township, or Sections 29 through 32.
Thank you. So, at this time, I am going to open the public hearing. The time is 6:36 PM. Anyone here wishing to make comment, or questions, or concerns about the sidewalk maintenance program may do so now at the microphone on the right-hand side of the room. I don't see anyone making a move. So, I'm going to close this public hearing, and the time is still 6:36 PM. Okay. This will take us to our unfinished business item from the last meeting, postponed from May 14th. I'm sorry?
Do you need him?
Ask me again.
Okay.
So, again, we have before us a request to award the sidewalk maintenance program to Luigi Fernandi and Sons Cement Company in the amount of $853,427.93. So moved. Support. Mr. Johnson.
All right, so utilizing the RFP process, we, the township received five proposals with Luigi Fernandi and Sons Cement Company being the lone proposal that was interviewed. They were also the lowest responsible bidder for the project, given the scoring of the proposal and the interview. Again, this is the southwest four sections of the township, roughly 1,360 locations they'll be, they'll be performing maintenance on, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Papa, to award the sidewalk maintenance program work to Luigi Fernandi and Sons Cement Company in the amount of $853,427.93. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Kevin? Moving on to new business. Item 10 is a request to authorize, request for authorization to begin design work for the 2026 pathway gap closure program in the amount of $1,080,000.
Motion to approve.
Support. Ms. Cozak.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and members of the board. The engineering department has been working closely with trustee Lucido, as well as supervisor Viviano, to develop the 2026 program, pathway program. And before you, in your packet, you should have had a map that kind of outlined what those areas were. So, we're looking at filling in some gaps in this program along Heinrich from Hall to 21, Card Road from 22 to 23. And then, there's a few gaps also on Tilt Road from Hall to 21 and a little area on that Eastview Drive that extends off of Tilt Road. We're also going to look at doing the engineering on the east side of Fairchild Road, south of the railroad tracks to Hall Road. Just the engineering at this time, we're going to try to button all that up here this year, as well as the acquisition for the land, and then focus on the construction in a, in a future year.
And just to clarify, the $1,080,000 is the total scope of the project?
That is correct.
Including construction?
That is correct. It's a total project cost. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by clerk Posey, supported by trustee Oliver, to begin design work for the 2026 pathway gap closure program, $1,080,000. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. That'll take us to item 11. Is a request to execute revised cost-sharing agreement for the design and right-of-way costs with Macomb County Department of Roads for the construction of Broughton Road from 23 Mile to 24 and a half mile road.
Motion to approve.
Support. Crystal?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and members of the board. Just last month, you guys had an agreement before you for this, the same exact portion of the project. The Department of Roads came to us. They had included land acquisition costs in the cost-share agreement, which they don't typically participate in those costs for. They will help us prepare the documents to acquire the land, but not the actual payment of the land. So, they've submitted this revised cost-share agreement to us, basically eliminating that. So, they've taken down their portion of the land acquisition from 120, or the total amount, 120 to 75. So, that does reduce the cost-share agreement just by a little bit, but our cost share is still the same. It's still a 60-40 split with the Department of Roads.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by clerk Posey, supported by trustee Lucido, to execute a revised cost-sharing agreement for the design and right-of-way costs with Macomb County Department of Roads for the construction of Broughton Road from 23 to 24 and a half mile road. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Let's take us to item 12. Is a request to promote employee 2412. Mr. Brian Wooters.
Motion to approve.
Support. Mr. Tabaka.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board members. Human Resources posted the park supervisor two position internally in anticipation of the current incumbent's upcoming retirement in accordance with the Ask Me CBA. One application was received, and the candidate was interviewed by myself and Sal DeCarlo. Following the interview, Sal and I believe that Brian Wooters is highly qualified for the role based on his experience and skill set. Brian's been employed with the township since September 4th, 2018. Throughout his tenure, Brian has demonstrated strong leadership and supervisory abilities in his current role. His responsibilities have included both building and grounds maintenance, giving him a broad understanding of the department's operation. Given his background and qualifications, we believe Brian would be a great fit for the Parks and Rec Department. This is a budgeted position. If approved, the promotion would be effective tomorrow, May 29th. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by clerk Posey, supported by treasurer Gillette, to promote Brian Wooters. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Let's take us to our next item, is a request to hire part-time firefighters. Is there a motion to approve? So moved. Support. Mr. Tabaka.
Thank you again. HR continues to actively recruit for the position of part-time firefighter. The department received 10 applications, and all applicants were invited to participate in a written exam, which was conducted from April 21st through the 23rd. Candidates who passed the written exam advanced to the physical agility test that was held on April 29th. Four candidates successfully completed the agility test and were interviewed by the selection committee on May 13th. That committee included Chief Phillips, Deputy Chief Monroe, and Sherlin Arf. And they recommend the following individuals for hire. James App, Kevin Grimes, Trevor Lesaw, and Joshua Morton. These are budgeted positions. If approved after completion of all post offer requirements, the effective day of hire would be around June 9th of this year. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tabaka. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by trustee Oliver, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the hiring of Mr. App, Grimes, Lesnow, and Morton to the part-time firefighter position. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Let's take us to item 14. Is a request to approve a rezoning of parcel 0810400025 from agricultural to residential multiple low density, or R2L. Is there a motion to approve? So moved. Support. Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and board. As you mentioned, this is a request to rezone a property from AG, or agriculture, to R2L, which is residential multiple family low density. The property is located at the northeast corner of 24 Mile and Foss Road. I'm sure you've seen the red signs. They've been out there for a few weeks, advertising that it's up for rezoning. This did go before the planning commission, who recommended unanimously to rezone the property. Staff has reviewed it. It does match the master plan, and we are in support.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by trustee Lucido, supported by treasurer Gillette, to approve the rezoning of parcel 0810400025 from agricultural to R2L. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item for tonight's agenda is a request to approve a charitable gaming license. A charitable gaming license resolution for the nonprofit 1111 Foundation for Limb Girdle Muscular Dystrophy D1 Research Funding. Is there a motion to approve? So moved. Support. Mr. Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, board members. Township is in receipt of a request for a resolution being approved for a nonprofit status. Essentially, what happens, in order for these organizations to be able to raise money through poker rooms, or 50-50 raffles, or what have you, they have to have that approved by this, a, this resolution approved by the local jurisdiction, which they can forward to the state. The local jurisdiction is where the address of the organization is located. This particular organization has submitted everything they needed to, to the state. They have met all the requirements as far as the bylaws, nonprofit status, and IRS tax code. The last step in order- The last step in order for them to be able to host these type of events is for us to approve a resolution. With that, I am recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce.
Thank you.
Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
How long is this, is this license good for?
It's indefinite. This is, this is forever until the organization dissolves. But in the time I've been here in the last eighteen years, none have ever resolved, or dissolved. When they do, they would notify us that they were no longer in place.
Does that include if they lose their five oh one three?
For whatever reason, if the state gets rid of, when it's dissolved, it'd be for either they are no longer actively doing that work and filing the paperwork with the state, or the state has revoked that privilege.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Papa, to approve the charitable gaming license resolution for the nonprofit eleven eleven Foundation for Limgirdle Muscular Dystrophy D one research funding. Clerk Posey, we call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
Trustee Papa?
Yes.
Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, that resolution is adopted.
Thank you, board members.
Let's take us to Parks and Rec Department. Their first is a request to approve the remodel of the Fa, of Phase One restrooms at Macomb Corners Park in the amount of seventy-three thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars.
So moved.
Support? Mr. DeCarlo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, board members. Parks and Recreation Department's requesting permission to remodel Phase One restrooms at Macomb Corners Park. We place this item on mitten. Received five bids ranging from seventy-three thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars to a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. This time, we're recommending Windstar Construction receive the contract to perform the work for seventy-three thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. I've included the price comparisons, confirmation of process memo from the purchasing department. This is a budgeted item, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarlo. How long do we expect the restrooms to be out of service when, once it starts?
So we want them to start on July the seventh because it's between baseball and soccer seasons, their, their spring and their fall seasons. It says four to six weeks. They think if there's no complications, they can have it done for four weeks. We will have Port of Johns, obviously, on, on Phase One, and we'll move the Rosco event to Phase Two. So other than the daily, you know, at the, at the playscape and things like that, we won't have the regular, you know, the, the higher stuff out there.
Understood. Any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So you said there is a, a brief period where there's no activities going on there. How long is that? Is that a couple?
So baseball ends around Fourth of July, just before Fourth of July. They start up again at the end of August, beginning September. And we do have our concerts, so we'll bring out extra Port of Johns for those days.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Motion by Trustee Papa, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the remodel of Phase One restroom project at Macomb Corners Park in the amount of seventy-three thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. And our next item is a request to replace the water slide at the, in the aquatics area of the rec center. Total cost, three hundred and six thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Support? Mr. DeCarlo?
Thank you again. Parks and Recreation Department's requesting permission to replace the water slide, the aquatics area of the rec center. This is a sole source project. At this time, we're recommending we allow Splashtacular to perform the work for a total cost of three hundred and six thousand dollars. We would be, we would be replacing the original slide that Spectacular installed in two thousand and four. We saved significant amount of money by being able to reuse all the engineering drawings from the first install. I've included the proposal, the sole source memo, and the confirmation of process memo from the purchasing department. This is a budgeted item, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarlo. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Trustee Lucido, to approve the replacement of the water slide in the aquatics area of the rec center in the amount of three hundred and six thousand dollars. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, board.
Thank you. All right, this will move on to item eighteen. So item eighteen and nineteen are similar. So the first one is a request to approve the consent judgment. International Transmission Company v. Macomb Township. Macomb County Circuit Case Number twenty-five zero 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 nine nine five C C. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support? Mr. Thompson, you had a chance to review these real quick. I know Mr. Loy was the one who was dealing with it, but can you give us a quick overview?
I sure can. So before the board tonight is two consent judgments related to properties that we were named as defendants in a condemnation action for the sole reason we already have a sanitary or sewer easement over these particular properties. As is typical, our main concern is that we want to maintain that we are priority when it comes to the sanitary sewer easements, including that any damage that could be done by ITC and the performance of their functions would be covered by them. We have done so within these consent judgments. We are recommending approval of both of them as submitted.
And there's two separate physical locations, that's why.
Two separate, correct. Two different parcels.
Engineering department have anything to add to that?
No, Mr. Supervisor. We've reviewed them, and we don't have any objection.
With that, is there any questions or discussion on the first consent judgment item?
Mr. Chairman, I got a question through the chair to legal counsel. Does this close the case? Is this a final order?
I do not know if it closes a case because there's other parties involved, and there's an issue with regard to compensation for other parties. But for the purposes of the township, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cusmano. Anyone else? Hearing none. Motion by Treasurer Gillette, supported by Trustee Oliver, to approve the consent judgment in International Transmission Company v. Macomb Township. Macomb County Circuit Case Number two five zero 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 nine nine five dash C C. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. So the next item is with the same parties, just a different physical location in the township. This is item nineteen. Is a request to approve the consent judgment for International Transmission Company v. Macomb Township, Macomb County Circuit Case Number two five zero 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 nine zero zero dash C C. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support? Is there any questions or discussion on this one?
Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Yes.
This is a two thousand twenty-five case. It looks like it came in early in two thousand twenty-five through the chair to counsel. Is this unusual to turn over a case similar to this? Vis a vis a consent judgment? Seven months into the case?
For the township, it would not be because we're dealing with a limited, a limited property interest with our easement for the sanitary sewer only. For the purpose of those that they're taking property otherwise not being previously affected, it would be, but in our case, no.
Okay, thank you, sir. That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Motion by Trustee Lucido, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the consent judgment in International Transmission Company v. Macomb Township, Macomb County Circuit Case Number two five zero 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 nine nine zero C C. Motion. Members, please vote. Somebody stuck. Oh, there it is. Motion passes unanimously. All right, and our last regular item is a request to approve the sidewalk pathway maintenance program policies and procedures. Kevin, why don't you come back up to the microphone? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support? All right, so before us is, as described in the board packet, is the policies and procedures by which the township intends to execute the ordinance that we pass to maintain our public pathways and sidewalks. It spells out a lot of detail as to the process and the procedures by which the DPW department, under Mr. Johnson's direction, will take charge of the program, how residents will be invoiced, and their, and their relief, if any. It also outlines the portions of the township public pathways that the township itself will assume responsibility for. And with that, Kevin or I will take any questions. Hearing none. Motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to approve the sidewalk pathway and maintenance program policy and procedure. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, board. Thank you, Kevin. All right, this will take us to our, our second public comment of the evening. This is for non-agenda items. Anyone who has anything to say may do so now, using the microphone on the right-hand side of the room. I don't see anyone. So we do have a closed session item, which is going to come up shortly. There is a scheduled vote after the closed session item. However, per our standard procedure, we're going to do board comments, and then we will ask for a motion to go into closed session. So at this time, Trustee Lucido?
Just congratulations to the new hire firefighters and promotion in the Parks and Rec.
That's it? Trustee Papa?
Yes, also saying congratulations to Brian for his promotion and as well as the, our new firefighters. Also a shout out to the Dakota High School Drum Line, who not only have won the state championship for a third year in a row, but are now world finalists in the international competition in, in Dayton, Ohio. They finished in fifth place, so congrats to them.
Thank you, Trustee Papa. Trustee Oliver?
Same thing. Congrats to Brian Wooters. He started here. He's been working here a long time, worked his way up. Always liked to see that. Congrats to part-time, part-paid firefighters. And just, again, I make this comment all the time, but I continue to say it. We have a community that we reinvest money in. We're, we're rebuilding our restrooms. We're making, we're rebuilding our water slide. Some communities might not look at that like we do, but we respect our residents, and we respect the way we spend our money. So that's it.
Thank you. Also, Trustee Oliver. Trustee Cusmano?
No comments tonight. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Trustee Cusmano. Treasurer Gillette?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also, congratulations to Brian Wooters and to firefighters App, Grimes, Lesnow, and Morton. Like to echo Charlie Oliver's comments about the investment we have in maintaining our, our parks. Some of you may not be aware in the public that the new playscape is open at Waldenberg Park. It looks great. It looks like a lot of fun. And that is part of the complete reinvestment into that park to restore the bridges. That have, the last couple of years, the bridges have been restored, the, the restrooms have been restored. And that investment now is being, is being extended at Corners Park with the restrooms there. So we've all, I think, been to public places where it may have been a little bit, a little bit beaten down or downtrouting, or it looks neglected. And our community, you know, we have pride in making sure that our residents have a clean and safe and up-to-date environment to bring their children or to just enjoy the park. So thank you, Sal, for doing a great job.
Thank you, Treasurer Gillette. Clerk Posey?
Just to add on to what Mr. Gillette said, one of the reasons the parks look that way is due to Ken Delbra, who has submitted his retirement. I'm sad to see him go. He's done amazing things for the Parks and Recreation Department, especially in our parks. But Brian Wooters, congratulations. He will have to fill some big shoes, but I'm, I'm confident he will do a wonderful job. Also, thank you to, welcome to the new part-time firefighters, and thank you for joining our team and working in our community. That's all I have.
Thank you, Clerk Posey. Same as my colleagues. Congratulations to our new hires in the fire department. Congratulations to Mr. Wooters. He is certainly well-qualified and well-respected around here, and Ken did an amazing job for us. I'm happy that Ken finally gets to reap the rewards of his long career. Hopefully, he won't be a stranger to us. That's all I got for today. And now I'm going to ask for a motion to go into closed session to discuss a tentative collective bargaining agreement between Macomb Township and the Michigan Association of Public Employees that will, would be effective July first, two thousand twenty-five, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-nine pursuant to MCL fifteen point two six eight one C and H. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Support?
Is there any questions or discussion regarding this motion? Hearing none. We have a motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Clerk Posey, to go into closed session to discuss a tentative collective bargaining agreement pursuant to MCL fifteen point two six eight one C and H. Clerk Posey, we call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Supervisor. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Cusmano?
Yes.
Trustee Lucido?
Yes.
Trustee Papa?
Yes.
Treasurer Gillette?
Yes.
And Supervisor Viviano?
Yes, that resolution, or that motion is a, approved. It's not a resolution. All right, we are going into closed session. The time is seven oh three PM. And our attorney? All right, so we are returning from closed session. The time is 7:16 PM. So at this time, I am going to request to approve the tentative collective bargaining agreement between McComb Township and the Michigan Association of Public Employees effective July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2029. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Support.
Nancy, you can come up to either the podium, or the chair, up to you. Nancy's going to give us a summary of the contract that we're about to approve.
Good evening, Board. A summary of the contract is that there was a significant cleanup and housekeeping made as a result of the last negotiations, where the PTO bank replaced vacation and sick banks. So there's a lot of redlining that just is updating the formatting. Wage increases can be summarized as three and a half, three, three, and three and a half, which, in our opinion, is exceptionally reasonable, given inflation and neighboring increases that we are seeing in other communities. There are also retention and incentives in order to obtain certifications to ensure that our water and sewer departments maintain their licensing and operational effectiveness. And the grievance process was updated so that it aligns with the IAFF process, which allows continuity and the folks that are administering that on behalf of the township. There's a slight increase in the uniform allowance to the boots that the folks in the Department of Public Works purchase annually. And there are removals to references related to the Broadcast Media Department, which is no longer in effect here at the township. And that is a broad overview of the summary, in our opinion, that the township negotiation team did an excellent job in supporting the employees, achieving concessions, and also advancing the township.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion from the board before we vote? Hearing none. Motion by Trustee Oliver, supported by Trustee Papa, to approve the collective bargaining agreement between McComb Township and the Michigan Association of Public Employees effective July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2029. Members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. I just want to thank the bargaining committee. Thank you for all of your earnest and hard work for the HR Department, Mr. Tabaka, and for Ms. Olin and the Kelly Firm. I think everybody did a fantastic job reaching a very amicable contract. Of course, the union employees as well. I did. I just thanked the bargaining committee. That was the first thing I thanked. Play the tape back if you don't blame me. So and with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Support.
Any questions or discussion? Motion by Clerk Posey, supported by Treasurer Gillette, to adjourn the meeting. Members please vote.
I was way off.
Yeah, so did I.
Motion passes unanimously. This meeting is adjourned.